The initial.
I've lost audio there.
Yeah, I think we actually lost Nadine herself.
Oh, okay, you lost Nadine. All right.
All right.
Hey, let me see if I can. Yeah, she just sent me a message to drop that. Let me see if I can get her back on. Otherwise, I can pull it up on my end if she can't get back on.
Yeah, I've got the slides as well. So Teresa, if you want to make me a co-host, I can put those up.
There I see Nadine is joining us again there. There she is.
There she is.
I'm so sorry about that. I got a little alert pop-up and I think I chose the wrong event. So you would think, um, yeah, after this long in the pandemic. So if I could get permission to share my screen again, I can apologize.
No worries.
Okay. All right. So hopefully, we're back where we started. And you can all see my screen again.
We can't. Yep, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we are, as I, as I mentioned, we are nearing the end of the planning process for the T-FIP. And we wanted to share some of the outcomes and recommendations with you all today. And, uh, you know, open it up for questions and answers towards the end. So I'm going to run through most of the slides pretty quickly. And then we have, I'm also joined by my colleague Cassandra Dobson, who will cover a few of the additional sort of implementation components at the, at the end of the slideshow. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. We'll go through, as I said, we'll go through intros, we'll do a project recap, the recommended projects and implementation and the next steps. So, uh, I'm Nadine Appenbrink with Parametrics. We are a transportation planning and design firm. And on this project, we were also joined by SEFT Consulting, which was a firm that specializes in earthquake and tsunami engineering. So it was a, it's a really great team for this. The, we are at the, nearing the end of the process. We've just wrapped up the third and final public engagement milestone. And we are with the, the draft final plan in hand. We are seeking any final comments from the board today and will incorporate comments from the public engagement. And as Gail mentioned, we had our project advisory committee meeting, our final project advisory committee late last fall. So the goals of this project were to improve safety, to improve connections, so a network of hardened evacuation routes that also serve as recreational facilities, to improve equity, to reduce transportation-related disparities and barriers, and to promote collaboration. So continue the collaboration among partners across the county. I'll just do a quick recap of our sort of existing conditions. That was one of the first steps that we did. We found that relatively few of the existing recreational trails provided an evacuation benefit. And so thinking about that, a lot of the trails are, you know, parallel to the coast. Whereas for an evacuation benefit, you really want them to be perpendicular so that it gets you, you know, inland pretty quickly. There's high landslide susceptibility in many areas, as well as soil liquefaction areas that were concerned. The area of greatest evacuation need in terms of exit, you know, comparing to existing facilities was in the area just north of Gearhart, as well as the Fort Stevens State Park, which is a major destination. There were, in looking at the evacuation facilities planned for the cities, that's out of the scope of this project, we were looking specifically at county, county land, county areas outside the five cities. And looking at how the cities, you know, interact with the county lands, there was relatively little need for additional connections there as they were, they were largely covered. So now we'll go through and discuss the three sort of types of evacuation facilities and, and recreational facilities that we are recommending in this project. Those include trails, assembly areas, and vertical evacuation structures. So for the trail types, we identified three sort of broad categories of these trails that would serve going forward. And each of them exists now in the county. First would be on-street trails. Those are ones that use either existing paved road right of way or might be added to just adjacent to the road. These are great because they're, you know, existing routes that people are familiar with. And they're, you know, generally flat, level, and paved. The second type is the multi-use path. This is an off-street path separated from car traffic. That's for the exclusive use of people walking, biking, using, using a mobility device. And these are both, both on-street trails and multi-use paths are great because they're typically comply with ADA guidelines. The third type is actually probably some of the most common. So there's quite a few recreational trails in the county. And these have a wider range of facility types. So they can be everything from nearly paved, you know, soft pack gravel, all the way to sort of a more rocky, more steep facility. And so depending on the, the need and the topography that sort of determined which we recommended. And so we definitely favored the first two in terms of accessibility where possible. We also identified additional locations for assembly areas. Many, there are many assembly areas already designated across the county. And as you know, they are areas that are in natural high ground outside the tsunami inundation area. And they are often, you know, signage that says you've arrived. And they're great for recovery planning as their sort of meeting places that can be used for, you know, distributing information, food, water, after, after the, after the event. And one of the things that we found was that some locations of the assembly areas were in locations where people from their home might need to go east, no, I'm sorry, west, to, to get to like maybe a ridge where it might be against their natural inclination to want to, to move east. And so we looked for opportunities to add assembly areas where it might make more, you know, in the moment sense to travel west. As well as just areas where there, you know, could use additional coverage. And the third type of facility that we examined for this project are vertical evacuation structures. And so these are something new to Oregon. There are a few now in Washington State, but they're very, they're quite a bit more common in other countries of the Pacific Rim like Japan. These are structures that are built with the purpose of tsunami evacuation in mind. And they're located in areas where natural high ground cannot be reached in time. So it's locations where it's, you know, quite flat and by walking, you're not able to get to natural high ground in time. And so these can be, there are several types. You can have sort of the center one is an evacuation tower. It's purpose-built specifically for evacuation. It can also be used as a viewpoint if it, if, you know, if the county wanted to keep it open, you know, more days of the year. There's also soil berm. So these are engineered soil mounds that can be used. They can also have a structure on top, but they can be, you know, part of a park system or a natural amenity or a trail could go up to the top. So they could be multi-use. Then the third type is actually incorporated into even existing or a newly-built structure. And the example that you can see here are the bottom right corner. That's a, a school in Washington State where they decided to build the elementary school with a rooftop refuge. And so it needs to, all of these just need to be, you know, well-engineered and then built with, with the wave height in mind. So they're well above the wave. So in thinking about the vertical evacuation structures, the question is, you know, where and how many? And we identified zones or areas that, that it might be more difficult to reach natural high ground. And so those you can see in pink on this map. And so rather than identify specific locations, we identified these zones and are encouraging additional, you know, community outreach and community engagement on this topic to be able to identify, you know, the, the number and the location of these based on community priorities. So this additional work, but really important. So with that, we'll move into discussing some of the recommended locations and the, the process we went through to identify these types of facilities. So we are recommending 12 additional trail connections. So these are either existing trails that could be hardened, which typically just means built up to withstand both the shaking and the potential impacts of an earthquake so they'd be functional throughout. 18 additional assembly areas. And these are often associated with trail improvements or existing evacuation routes within the county. And then six of those sort of zones or areas where vertical evacuation structures should be considered. And in doing this, we used a set of evaluation criteria that was established and vetted through the, both the first open house, the, the public open house, and through the project advisory committee. So these include user experience, safety and security, multimodal connectivity, so connecting in with the existing networks, land use and regulatory impacts, property ownership impacts, you know, seeking to minimize any potential private property owner impacts, directness of travel, funding, infrastructure hardening. So that again is sort of the, using existing facilities, but just making them more resilient. Phasing opportunities, accessibility. And again, that's sort of the, the difference between sort of a paved, flat trail and, and a more recreational trail that might require a, you know, more able-bodied population served and making use of existing infrastructure. So what I'm going to do here is just walk through one little example of the sort of, the, the process that we went through in terms, in terms of evaluating these and recommending. This is the Colby Lake area. And so this actually came from some of the public outreach after the second or during the second open house. So there was a comment during the open house that suggested this and, and we thought it was a great idea. And so are happy to incorporate it. This new trail would connect the parking lot of an existing park to natural high ground. And the constraints would be that it would require a new trail in a wooded area. And there may be a steep slope. So using the evaluation criteria, this trail would address evacuation needs, provide multimodal connectivity, and have a pretty high feasibility because of the land ownership and the, the accessibility. And then we also did sort of planning level, high-level cost estimates for each of these trail options. So I'm going to move through these fairly quickly, but these are detailed in, in the, the draft plan, the T-FIP, that hopefully you're able to, to access. We have several trails in the, near the Fort Stevens area and an assembly area that connects those. Within and around Camp Reilia, we identified, and again, these pink areas are the areas where it might be most appropriate for identifying vertical evacuation structures. And so there's trails, you know, locating in and out of high ground. And in the Camp Reilia area, you can see, when I mentioned those sort of, those ridge areas that are high ground, the green that you can see on these maps is natural high ground. And, and the areas outside of the green would be potentially inundated. And so there's trails that are, are getting folks, you know, up and into high ground. Moving a little bit farther south, we've got suggestions and recommendations for the Sunset Lake area and Colby Lake. You can see this where it says A-10. That's the, the trail I just profiled. And then moving farther south, near Arch Cape, we've got several trail recommendations and additional assembly areas here as well. Another location that we wanted to suggest for either an evacuation assembly area or a sort of a reconnaissance point would be the junction of US 101 and 26. This is a really important area. And we've heard from many people that, you know, especially in the summer, it gets really packed. And so there's just so much traffic here that, that being in high ground is also an asset. And just a sort of a natural junction. So thinking about either, you know, a, a really beefed up assembly area or some kind of reconnaissance point here, I think would make a lot of sense. We'll move into the assembly areas. So in addition to recommending locations for these, so we also recommended amenity packages. And so this is really thinking about beyond just a signage that says, you know, you have arrived at natural high ground, which is sort of the minimum, the minimum investment type. We're also suggesting that some locations and potentially all locations, you know, phased over time. And again, that just depends on funding and, and ability. But to look at providing either at least overhead shelter from, you know, from the elements or from the sun, seating and lighting. To this, just to provide another layer of help. And then for the high investment package, these would be locations that might be a bit more remote or, or expected, you know, just a lot more people. So in addition to shelter, seating and lighting, also things like communications devices, radio, first aid supplies, drinking water, food and blankets, and a power supply that's off-grid, so solar or something like that. And this is sort of thinking about the levels would be, you know, adding additional infrastructure. And then the final package would really be sort of consumables or things that would need to be monitored over time and potentially changed out, you know, within the lifetime of, you know, first aid supplies and that sort of thing. And one of the, the things that has come up is that there's a, there's a real strong potential for public-private partnerships or working with civic groups to actually maintain this type of thing. I know there are programs within the county, but perhaps within some of the cities where there's cash programs. So people can actually bring in materials to a centralized location that they can then have access to every once in a while to refresh supplies. And so just having that sort of centralized approach is something we recommend. Okay. And so we already went over this. I won't go spend too much more time, but we identified six potential areas for evacuation structures. So definitely the Fort Stevens area, quite flat and often, you know, summertime becomes a really, really big tourist draw. Camp Reilia, the Sunset Lake area, this area north of Gearhart. That's quite a bit of residential development. And then these two areas in Younges Bay as well. And some of the areas are, it, it's as much just like road building or private property that needs, you know, that, that means it's difficult to, to egress as well as distance. So I'd like to pause if, if we can, just, we have a few more slides, but before we get into the implementation content, I wonder if there are any questions I can answer. Looks like Councilperson Thompson.
Commissioner Thompson has a question there. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Well, I imagine all my neighbors were busy dealing with revision of the comp plan and short-term rental issues. Cause I looked in vain. It was, first of all, this is a fabulous report. This is a fabulous report. I, the outreach for Dogami to get the maps out. And so you've built beautifully on that work and you've really honored it. In almost every case, there are a couple of concerns I have. I didn't see anywhere in this the words Cove Beach. I didn't see anywhere in this, the Arch Cape Tunnel. I saw that little phrase toward the end of it. You said Falcon Cove. Well, that's what we call the Tillamook County side of the geographical feature that's Falcon Cove. So there's a missing there. There's an omission that I think is significant. Cause we've got a neighbor who has an assembly area. She told me, one of the reasons she's so adamant about dealing with short-term rentals is because whoever is here physically present in Falcon Cove Beach is probably going to show up in her backyard. So your A-21 may be on the water district land. As you said, that's going to be surrounded by water. We've got a different assembly area. It's the southern, southern, well, we need to talk about that. And I apologize. I didn't come to your meetings. I just can't do everything. So if, if we can confer about how to look at real assembly areas here and how to deal with the fact that that Arch Cape, Arch Cape Tunnel is going to be collapsed, I think that's critically important to a segment of the population. And the spillover into the short-term rental issue as well. I love your idea about doing something at US 26 and 101. What I would love to see is a parking garage that's designed to have the water flow through and then have a heliport on top. Because it's going to, it's going to take helicopters and airplanes. We can't, we can't build a landing strip on top. But if we build a heliport on top, that'd be great. The other thing I didn't see, I, I want to be tactful and graceful about this, but I'll sacrifice that for bluntness. People come here to vacation and some of them self-medicate to have a good time. So there is some, what we might term substance use disorder that goes on with the transient population, because that's part of having a good time in a lot of people's world. We also have a population of folks with substance use disorders. We have a homeless population. So there's nothing in this report that contemplates anything but really polite, well-behaved people. And I don't think we're going to have that because if there is a tsunami, that human behavior is going to become paramount. I mean, folks, folks have had their, their barrels, their emergency supply barrels in Cannon Beach and people break in because it's, you know, they're told, oh, don't put money in there. Don't put guns in there. Well, people do it anyway because they just want to do what they want to do. And it's that factor of people doing what they want to do. I don't know how you address that. At, at least, at least articulate that as an issue, please. Cause that's the part that spooks me, that still keeps me up at night. Otherwise, really just a fabulous report. Thanks so much.
Appreciate your comments. And I think we should connect on the Cove Beach topic. I think we can definitely. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Nadine, just to Commissioner Thompson's point, I would be remiss. I work at Columbia Memorial Hospital and I would, I, I think it's important to kind of mention that we're working on a tsunami kind of safe refuge area in incorporating an expansion project here. The hospital actually have been doing some engineering and, and design work on a potential potential building that would have a helipad and, and have access in the event of a, of a, of a, an event, well, in an event, and then also have access for the community to evacuate to. So I guess my question would be is how do we get, I mean, if that ends up being something that would be a real advantage to, to that area, does it need to be included within this facility's improvement plan? Or how do we, I guess, go about that?
I think that would be great. It would be, pardon my ignorance, where, where in the county is that located?
So it's in Astoria and it's on kind of the east end of Astoria. There is a, a flat area kind of around it, but then it abuts a large hillside.
Yeah, I think, um, I'd be happy to follow up with you, maybe for Gail after this to get information about it. I, I will reiterate that our project didn't look in, within cities to, to existing or, you know, planned facilities within cities beyond just the sort of the interaction between that. So
Yeah, that makes sense.
But I, I do think that's, you know, it's an important resource.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, and thank you for reminding me. There's a whole organization that's been dealing with this. The Coastal Partners Health Organization. So there's a network and it's Clatsop County, if it's also Tillamook County and lots of partners, health, healthcare organizations and community organizations like the Medical Reserve Corps in Cannon Beach. Cause you did reference CERT, but the Medical Reserve Corps is very active, very capable. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Webb?
Thank you. This, this was, this was marvelous. It was very meaty. Thank you so much. I, I loved the drawings. It was, it, it's stimulating.
Commissioner Webb, I think you cut out there or froze on us. I guess that
Shoot.
She got disconnected there.
We, perhaps we can come back to her when she's back online.
Do that.
What I might suggest is that we move on to the implementation component of the presentation. So this is where the sort of, so what or now what we want to talk about and how, how we action, action bring this to fruition through the county's processes. So what I'm going to do is pass, I'm going to continue sharing my screen, but pass the control over to Cassandra. And also with Parametrics to, to walk us through that.
Thank you, Nadine. Perfect. So as Nadine said, she talked about all these great recommendations that we've come up with, but against this kind of where the rubber meets the road and how we actually turn those into reality. So really important first step in implementing these is going to be integrating the goals and recommendations within the T-FIP into the county's planning documents and regulations. This will allow the county to include tsunami evacuation facility development in your long-term land use, transportation and development decisions. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. I know we have limited time today. There was an implementation memo included with your packet. But I hope you all have time to review and we're happy to answer questions about that as well. Kind of our first set of recommendations included amendments to the county's comprehensive plan. Many of these come from DLCD, Tsunami Land Use Planning Guide. Those include policies for natural hazards, public facilities, transportation, and urbanization. Giving the kind of unique aspect of this particular T-FIP in that it integrates with your trail system. We also included some additional goals for recreational needs, as well as some additional policies for facility accessibility, as well as some for assembly areas. Next slide, please. So one important way the T-FIP can be implemented is through a tsunami hazard overlay zone included in your development code. We do know that the county has looked into adopting one in the past. I think it was in 2015. But it was ultimately tabled because of community concerns. However, we feel that now is a really good time, especially given the momentum moving forward with the T-FIP going through the adoption process to go ahead and revisit this, excuse me. Since then, many other communities on the coast, including Gearhart, Coos County, Tillamook County, Rockaway Beach, Newport, several others, sorry, have adopted an overlay zone. So this would be a good communities to look towards as kind of a case study to see how it's worked out in their communities since that's been adopted. Again, we think that moving forward on this, there should be some really strong public engagement that happens. Make sure that you have that community buy-in. And that your ultimate code is in line with the county's priorities. Again, this is a model code within the DLCD Tsunami Land Use Planning Guide. It really consists of three parts. So the first is placing restrictions on where new, new critical facilities can be built within this tsunami hazard area. Now, the second is a requirement to include evacuation facilities with many new developments, subdivisions, and substantial, excuse me, substantial improvements. And then the final piece is providing development incentives for design that decreases risk. So for example, for this, a new subdivision could use flexible development standards such as reduced setbacks or reduced minimum lot sizes to cluster development on a piece of land in an area that might be lower tsunami risk. Again, this is a model code that the LCD has developed. It is really meant to be adjusted to best for each specific community. So there is a lot of flexibility in how this ultimately gets written if you decide to pursue it. Next slide, please. We've also identified a few additional areas for updates to the development code. Those include removing height restrictions for vertical evacuation structures, allowing for emergency supply storage structures to be managed by community groups. Right now, they are allowed in any zone, but only if they're managed by the county. So that's in line with what Nadine was saying about the public-private partnerships with maintaining the supply cache areas. And then finally requiring that new development provides pedestrian connections to the emergency evacuation network. And kind of the final piece of this is including, not the trails, excuse me, adding the trails recommendations being adding the trails recommendations being included within your transportation systems plan. Um, and so that will allow the county to kind of plan for the funding, design, and construction of those alongside its other transportation investments moving forward. Uh, next slide, please. And there are several funding opportunities that we have identified, um, to help develop these facilities in the interest of time. I won't go into too much detail about these. Um, and we're happy to answer questions on any of them if you have specific questions, but they are available through um, or several federal and state um, agencies and they're intended to fund emergency infrastructure as well as recreational facilities. So definitely some great opportunities to find some funding here to look towards um, building these evacuation facilities. And with that, I will hand it back to Nadine for I think the last couple of slides.
Thanks so much, Cassandra. Um, yeah, so we just have one or two more slides. So these are sort of a condensed list of some of the recommendations um, pulled from both the plan and the implementation memo as well as some of the feedback we've received from PAC members and community uh, members, just sort of a summary. There's a real opportunity to build on um, the successes of our neighbors to the north. Um, in terms of the vertical evacuation structures, what we've heard is that there's quite a bit of interest from the FEMA, from the federal government in improving coastal resilience uh, through these facilities. And so there, there may be quite a bit of funding available. Um, and this, I think this plan, as well as future, you know, location identification would, would put the county in a strong position to, to, to work with the FEMA. Again, amending planning documents as, as Cass just mentioned, um, to sort of action, to, to, to bring this forward into, into action. Seeking funding to design and build facilities. As well, uh, we heard from several folks that uh, bridge reinforcements, although not within the scope of this project are also really important. And so we did, to the extent possible, identify where trails, you know, included a bridge and might need to be either roadway or, you know, off, off-road sort of more recreational, where those might need to be reinforced um, for, for evacuation purposes. The, I'll reiterate, there's a need for additional community conversations and decision-making around where vertical evacuation structures make the most sense. So, so actually putting pen to paper and, and having those small community workshops, those design activities where you sort of say, okay, here's the zone, but where does it actually make sense? What neighborhoods? What streets? Um, how many do we need? Um, and that, uh, I think is, is an important next step. The, again, not part of this project, but I know it's coordinated and I know the county's been working on signage, wayfinding, and we heard the need for um, materials to be in multiple languages. So making sure that it's accessible for everyone. And there's also a great partner stepping up through this process. So the Archcape Water District as well as Timberlands are both interested in um, using their resources and their lands to be able to designate and identify um, both recreational and evacuation routes. So it was really heartening to see that as well. We'll move on to the final slide. So, uh, we just have a few next steps at this point. We're, again, almost to the end. So finalizing the report based on your comments and suggestions. We will also incorporate PAC and public feedback at the same time. We've had a, you know, a running list of those recommendations and then move through adoption hearings as well. With that, uh, thank you so much for your time and we're happy to answer additional questions or, you know, hear additional suggestions at this point.
Yeah, thank you, Nadine. And Cassandra, do you have any questions, board members? I'll change my view so I can see people. Commissioner Toyoka?
Thank you. I just have a question, like, uh, reading through this, looking at some of those proposed trail alternatives. You know, that looks like they're trans, they go along private property with inside private property areas. Is, are these them recommendations or how do you, you know, or then if they aren't, who pays for it kind of deal? If it's private property, shouldn't it be, is it their responsibility, their? They can do it or not, you know, their, their discretion, or is it a mandated, or how does that work?
Um, I'll, I'll take a stab and then I can pass it on to Gail if she has anything else to add. Um, but our intention was to identify as few private property impacts as possible. So where that did happen, um, we're suggesting a, a public easement so that it would be public responsibility for maintenance and, and things like that. But um, where possible, we either identified locations between property lines, so along the edge or um, locating, you know, assembly areas and such on a public, you know, whether it's the county or other agencies. Uh, so it might require some agency-to-agency coordination, but as much as possible, we try to avoid private property impacts.
Yeah, because it, it just seems like if you're, if you're looking at private property on some of these, you know, like you said, not very many, but a few. Where does that responsibility begin and end? The trail itself or all the, the roads and, you know, ingress and egress points to get to that point, you know, so it could get into a really, you know, convoluted, you know, where does responsibility begin and end for that trail point? Because you have to get to the trail point first through roads, through access, through gates, everything. So, thank you.
I see, um, Community Development Director Henrikson has her hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, and I, to follow up on what Nadine just said in response to your question, Commissioner Toyoka, uh, these would all be voluntary easements. This would not be something where the county would come in and make it mandatory. However, is, where it could be used uh, in the future is if, for example, uh, a property sells and a developer comes in and now wants to maybe divide a larger property into a subdivision. Um, at that point, the county could then use this um, recommendation to uh, work with the developer to incorporate that into their subdivision design. But again, um, at this point, what's shown on the report are recommendations that would be voluntary and we would work with a property owner uh, to, to reach that final agreement in terms of an easement and maintenance responsibilities.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, that reminds me, every time we talk about human presence, there are issues of litter. Talking with the parks folks, it isn't just garbage, it's needles, it's human waste, it's pet waste. So all of the, the side effects of human presence, when I drive down the highway, I think, how can people do this? Why, why don't people take responsibility? Well, I am not the goddess of the world, so I can't make that happen. But to Commissioner Toyoka's point, if the county is establishing what's essentially a pedestrian thoroughfare, we hope, recreationally and particularly in cases of emergencies, but the ongoing maintenance and the collection, the responsible collection of garbage and, and restrooms for human waste. I, I just think those things have to be included. We have to talk about every aspect of this. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? One question I had, and I think you probably covered this and I didn't hear it, but uh, when you're talking about the mapping, um, are we mapping to the highest, the XXL, I guess, event or uh, or it, are there some levels of, is it just always the most extreme event that we're mapping?
That's a great question. That's something that we did skip over. I apologize. Um, we used the Dogami inundation scenario for a local event, which is a Oregon-Washington, um, and we use the XXL scenario, so the, the largest one. So that's the, the largest extent that's modeled.
Okay. And one thing I know that, uh, the hospital has been engaged in a modeling uh, through University of Washington. It's a size, uh, a kind of a site-specific modeling for, for a tsunami event. Um, and the result was kind of much different than what the Dogami kind of mapping. As new information comes available, how does that factor in, I guess, into, um, I guess, it, I guess it's always going to be the, the Dogami map that's going to prevail, correct?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I, um, we use the most recently available. I know they are continuing to update. Um, and there's also something that we didn't get into is another one of the data sources that Dogami provides and has only sort of created for a certain number of communities. Um, but it's called the Beat the Wave analysis. And so that's sort of the, the walking distance time within, and they started within communities where there's, you know, higher numbers of people.
Right.
Um, but it's, it's a, it's a really great visual to show, you know, how many minutes it would take using the existing street network or trail network to get to high ground. And so I think that's something that could also be done in the future here. Um, I, I'm, I think that it was just within incorporated communities within Clatsop County that that was available. I think two or three of them.
Okay.
Um, but again, that's another tool, but I, I agree that as, as that mapping gets updated, it may be good to sort of revisit and look at least at the, the, the areas of change.
Yeah.
If, if there are additional opportunities in those, um, areas.
Thank you, Nadine. Any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any, any, anything else, anything additional?
I don't think so. Um, I, we, we're really thankful for all the comments and the, the review today. Um, we can follow up through Gail with the, the folks who we've identified, Councilperson Thompson and, um, yeah, thanks so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Nadine, and thank you, Cassandra. Appreciate the presentation very much. And thank you, Gail, our Community Development Director. Are you going to stay on here for the next item?
Um, I'll be here, but Ian Sisson, our senior planner, will actually be presenting. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Next item is the fee waiver request, Velazquez CUP Appeal Application. That's on page 100. Our senior planner, Ian Sisson, uh, will present on this. Ian?
Thank you, Chair Quila. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to present a fee waiver request to you. Uh, last week, I came before your board to present the appeal request and you established a scope of review for this appeal. So this is that same case and the appellant's have requested a fee waiver because they believe that the Planning Commission should have continued their hearing on the application so that absent Planning Commission members could have participated. And during your discussion last week, uh, you established the scope of review to be the record that was established by the Planning Commission and discussed the possibility of a remand as well. And so that, um, that appeal hearing on the record will be forthcoming. The appellant's have requested to have that hearing on May 11th. So that's very likely when that will come back to you. Uh, and so today we are just presenting this fee waiver request to you for you to decide whether you would like to consider it. And if you would like to consider it, then we would have that on an agenda for you during a regular meeting. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions of our senior planner? Commissioner Thompson?
It's my job to have a question, sir. So here I am. You know, I really wish the Planning Commission had just continued this until they had a full, a full house, a full deck, whatever we want to say, a full complement of planning commissioners. And um, I'm generally a person who wants to abide by the rules and we have a rule that we recapture costs. We tell staff to do that for us. On the other hand, um, we don't micromanage the Planning Commission. Given those considerations, um, I'm inclined to say let's waive this fee because it, it wasn't, it wasn't the um, petitioner's fault that, that there wasn't enough of a planning commission to, to really, um, to really hear this. So I'm inclined to want to waive this fee, but I'm also very interested in what my colleagues have to say about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other comments, Commissioner Bang?
I too am for fee, waiving this fee, uh, just in the particular situation. I feel like, um, the county is, is, is held to providing a service and when we fail to provide that service, I feel like it is not the fault of the applicant, but it is the fault of ourselves. And so, um, I feel like the burden of, of, this is particular situation should fall upon us and not the applicant. Uh, it, I really wish that, um, I, I too wish the Planning Commission had, had waited to have a whole house in order to, uh, discuss, uh, streets such as this. And I just feel that the applicant deserves, um, our best. And if we can't provide our best, um, we need to figure out a way to make sure we provide our best. So anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bang. You were breaking up there a little bit, but I think we got the, uh, the gist of your comments. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I apologize. I seem to be having a lot of inter, internet issues, uh, coming just from my own desk. Um, yeah, I, I am, uh, please notice that in the three-plus years that I've been on the commission, I don't think, uh, that, um, I have ever been asked to consider a, a fee waiver. I, I might be wrong, but, and then suddenly in the past month or, or so, we, we've had two. Uh, and I, um, I believe that in, in this case, um, I am very much opposed to, to waiving this fee. The, the Planning Commission didn't do anything wrong. They acted according to their rules, which says that in the, in the case of a tie vote, it, it's a negative decision. Uh, and perhaps
Uh, Commissioner Webb, I think we lost you again, unfortunately. Yeah, we lost you, Commissioner Webb. Any other comments, questions? I think Commissioner Toyoka, then Commissioner Bangs.
I think it's, uh, thank you very much. This is the same as the last appeal, you know, to me in terms of process, county process. We need to look at how we're doing business, be the professional. And I know that, you know, um, Ian Sisson is doing professional work. The, the, the research is there, the process is there. I just, I think we, you know, with the Planning Department and the commission, the Planning Commission and us as well, have to look at it in terms of, I guess, customer service profile, you know? The people who come in for these applications don't do that every day. We do, we're the professionals. And we need to, you know, provide them the best guidance through this process. Is this achievable goal? Is it not? You know, should we go to step A, B, or C, or should we take another route? That would be, you know, the, uh, more beneficial based on the experience we have. And that's the only thing I see in, in this, both of these appeals is that I think as a county, we can take it as a learning point or process of our own side. Uh, and I pleased, uh, don't take it, I, I think the, you know, Ian Sisson, Gail, they're doing, you know, the, the work is wonderful. I just think it's our overall process.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb, we got you back there. If you wanted to finish your comments.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I, I just, I, I'm very, very hesitant, uh, at the fact that we may be setting a precedent that we're going to have to live with uh, very uncomfortably, uh, in these, in these waivers. Uh, and, you know, our staff did everything right. We didn't make any mistakes in this. Uh, and this is our process. If we want to change the process, great. But this was the process when these events took place. And I just think it's a very, very poor precedent, um, that, uh, that, that we have two consecutive fee waivers uh, in as many months. Uh, I, I think it's very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Uh, Commissioner Bangs, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to reiterate a point from our previous meeting, uh, that really stuck with me was that the Planning Commission did not follow staff recommendation. And to me, that kind of stuck out. And then second, my second point being that there are very few instances that the county and our constituents interact in a positive or a potential positive manner. And, and not a negative way or, or a situation where, where say they're in the court system or they're visiting with our sheriff's department or you know, they're in other facilities that may or may not have positive, um, interactions with our public. But, you know, the Planning Department, the Planning Department is one department where we can really focus on making sure that we serve our constituents in a very positive manner, make that interaction a very good interaction, educational, uh, with, with good communication.
Uh with with good communication and so on and so forth. So I I really feel like, you know. Yes, you know, the last two two appeals that we we dealt with and the last two situations that we dealt with. I do feel like that there should be some learning here that the county do. I, in in my personal opinion, I think that we can do better. On our communication. And it's not that the work that we're doing is at all um bad or that we're not following the rules or following the rules. It's just that we could probably do more for our constituents in the in the educational format of going through this process. Because as Commissioner Toyoka said, you know, our county is the professional in this situation. And so if we can improve the communication and and the education uh and make this process a little bit more positive, I think that that, you know. On the side, it'll pay off in the long run. So anyhow, those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Any other comments? I I think my my comment, I think to Commissioner Webb's point, I I completely understand uh the concern about the precedent. And that we have a staff that has worked extremely hard and extremely professionally on all of these matters as as well as our planning commission. Um I I think similar to what has been commented by Commissioner Bangs, Commissioner Token, Commissioner Thompson. I have to think about it from my own standpoint. If I was uh applying and expecting an appeal. Uh would I have felt like I got my full uh appeal and a full process? Um and basically my day in court, did I, did I get all of that uh for the fee? And I would say in this case, I didn't. And uh so I would be in favor of of waiving the fee. And it's just, uh I I I think again, it's it's a, it's not something that we want to make a habit of. Um it's a case by case basis, but but certainly in my in my uh, I think, experience and seeing in. Other venues in Warrenton where we've had folks that have have appealed a decision. Um I certainly want to uh be of the mindset that they're gonna have a full opportunity to state their case and have a a review. Um that's substantive and and then that's that, but. Any other question, comment? Okay, I'll turn it back, Ian.
Thank you, Commissioner. So what I'm hearing is that there is interest in granting a fee waiver request or granting the fee waiver request. So we will get this uh back in front of you during a regular meeting to make a formal decision on that.
Sounds good. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And thank you for all your work. And that was the last item on our agenda, our county manager. Do we have anything additional?
Uh Chair Quila, not this morning, so thank you very much for your time.
Okay, anything for the good of the order from any of the commissioners? Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your day. We'll talk soon.